So, roll call please.
Mayor McKay?
Yes, here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Amundson?
Here.
Mr. Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
You have a form.
Please stand for the pledge and Russell, you lead. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mayor, the first meeting is the meeting of the local planning agency.
Yep.
We have items on that agenda. If you are okay with it, Russell, to read the first item into the record.
Go right ahead. We've got to turn over what...
Kevin.
Six, uh, yeah.
Okay.
Kevin.
The first item is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council adopt an amendment to Article 100 concurrency review of the town of Southwest town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code pertaining to school concurrency level of service providing an effective date.
Can you read all of them?
No, we gotta do them one at a time. Jeff, can we turn it over to you?
Yeah, sure. We'll rip right through.
Want a motion or a second first, or no?
I heard a second, but I didn't know if I heard a motion.
I did.
Gary made a motion, I thought.
Yeah, yes, you're correct.
Okay.
Second?
Yep, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
This is, this is just, a lot of these things tonight are formalities. This is one of them. Three years ago, the council passed a resolution that was supporting a change in the way we measure capacity for public schools for the purpose of determining whether there is adequate capacity every time a site plan or a plat or rezoning that adds residential units is reviewed. The town signed on to the interlocal agreement, the amendment to the county school and municipal interlocal agreement agreeing to both amend its comp plan and its code to change the capacity standards consistent with the resident, with the interlocal agreement. That's what this does. That's all I've got.
Yep. All right. Any questions or any other issues on this? Any public comment on this?
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker.
Okay.
Speaker is Stephen Breckus, Mr. Breckus, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment to thank the, the comp board committee for their work on this and all that went into it. Also, Jeff, thanks for your guidance on it. But really, this was one of many things that the comp board worked on and they work diligently and have a lot of dedication. And as our year is coming to an end, I just wanted to take a moment and thank them for all their time and effort and expertise because the comp board takes, does take a lot of time and reading a lot of documents and work, walking through them. So, thank you, comp board, and appreciate all that you've done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Breckus. Okay, Mayor, we have no other speakers on this item?
All right, back to us. Any other issues or questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Councilmember Amundson? Councilmember Amundson? You're on mute.
Go ahead. I didn't say anything until just now. Yes?
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number four.
Item number four is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, making a recommendation that the town council adopt an amendment to the text of future land use element of the town's comprehensive plan, eliminating the residential medium density land use category and amending related housing element policies providing for an effective date.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this matter?
No, seeing Mayor? Uh-oh, did we lose the mayor?
Yep, no, I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, seeing none. Any additional comments on this matter? Seeing none, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Okay, motion passing.
Item number five, please.
Item number five is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council adopt an amendment to the text of the public school facilities and capital improvements elements of the town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan, pertaining to school concurrency level of service providing an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, any public comment on this matter?
I don't see any, Mayor.
Okay, back to us. Any additional questions? Seeing or hearing none, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes, Mayor.
Number six.
Number six is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council amend the town's greenways plan map and related policies in the recreation and open space element of the town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan, providing an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second. Second.
Any public comment?
Don't see any, Mayor.
All right, seeing none, back to us. Any additional questions or comments?
No.
Seeing or hearing none, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Approval of minutes.
Separately or together? I mean, motion will approve them all.
Okay. Need a second?
Keith? Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, any public comment because we've been corrected before?
I don't see any, Mayor.
Seeing none, any comments or questions on our end from anyone? Hearing none, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
And Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Okay, Gary, you're up.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. We'll take it. Okay, we gotta start a meeting over.
Oh, that wasn't it? I was gonna go. Okay.
Good luck. So, all right, roll call, please.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Amundson?
Here.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
All right, please stand for the pledge. Russell, if you'd lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor and council, the, the following item on your agenda is quasi judicial in nature. The one item is a site plan approval resolution for the Sikh Society. In this case, you're acting as judges to determine whether or not the applicant has proven by competent substantial evidence that it has met the criteria of the code to which a, a site plan would be approved. At this point, I'll ask Russell to read the item into the record, then we can swear in all the witnesses and do any agendas disclosures. Russell?
Okay, this is a resolution and final order of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving application number SP dash seven eight dash two zero by the Sikh Society of Florida, Inc., to amend its originally approved site plan to add an additional 2,021 square feet of building area to the existing facility, repealing resolution number 2,019 dash 32, which sought to amend the original site plan, although authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Anyone who wishes to speak on this item needs to be sworn in by Russell. And if anyone at home wishes to speak on this item, please state at the beginning of your comments if you've been sworn in. If not, Russell will swear you in at that time. Russell, if you could please swear in anyone wishing to speak.
Sure. If you could raise your right hand if you intend to speak, do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, before I'll turn it over to Jeff, has anyone had any expert communications concerning this site plan?
Not I.
No.
Not I.
Seeing none, Jeff, I will turn it over to you for introduction of the item and to submit the staff report to the record.
Keith, the staff report is hereby entered into the record. The council will recall that in February of 2019, the council approved, in addition to this property, it was at the northwest corner of the existing building. Subsequently, a new majority of the temple's governing board retained an architect to redesign the addition and relocate it to the east side of the temple building. It's very similar in size and function, but the location is different. Specifically, they're asking that the 2019 site plan approval be nullified so that that plan cannot be constructed, that this one be approved instead to relocate the addition. It's a little bit smaller. It's about 266 square feet smaller than the 2019 proposal, and it has a library and seven Sunday School classrooms. Previous one had a library slash conference center and study room, so it was essentially the same. The analysis is the same as far as parking setbacks and all that. It complies with all of our requirements subject to the same conditions the original one was approved for, which is a parking agreement that specifies that the different assembly areas can't be used simultaneously. The conditions of approval are also largely the same as the, the, the earlier resolution. The only difference is here is that there's a new dumpster location, so we're asking them to just confirm the acceptability of the orientation of the dumpster with Waste Pro. The location should be fine. Include a note on the site plan that assembly areas shall not be used concurrently except for the classrooms for religious instruction of children when the main assembly area is being used. And we're also asking that they stay plan to continuous hedge on the inside of the existing metal fence. So that'll screen the parking facility and the lower part of the addition from view from Dykes Road and Sterling. And we're adjusting the condition that required a landscaping along the empty lot to the south. The, the original resolution required a lands, a new fence, a landscape buffer along Dykes and the street to the south, sixty first, Southwest 61st Court. We're only modifying one thing, which is we're saying plant trees that'll be approved by the town planner instead of plant oak trees because there are power poles there, and that would be a conflict. So, another type of a lower growing tree will be more appropriate. That's it. That sums up the item for us.
Thank you, Jeff, for entering that. I, I believe the applicant is present. But I think the applicant's on mute. Jeff, is the applicant wishing to address this item?
Tom, did you want to speak on this?
I'm here. I'm listening to everything. I, I don't have anything to add to it. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Jeff, you pretty much covered what we're doing. It's, you know, it's almost the same program. They just felt that the construction cost of building it on the other side, for some reason, was much higher. I think it has to do with the tie-in and everything else, and some of the other work they were doing internally. So, you know, this is the plan that they, that they want, so we're hoping you can approve it.
And Tom, you all are agreeing with the, the staff's conditions of approval?
Of course. Yes.
All right. Does any member of the town council or staff or anyone have any questions of the applicant or Jeff at this time? Seeing none, Russell, we're gonna turn it over to the general public for comment, state their name, and if they've been sworn in. Does anyone in the general public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, public comment closed. Any concluding remarks, Jeff?
No.
Tom, any concluding remarks?
No, but thank you to Jeff for all his help to get this thing through.
Mayor, it's over to you and the council for deliberation. This is a quasi judicial item, and this will require five unanimous vote of the council for it to be adopted.
Okay, you're, you're still installing security cameras along with this plan, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have security.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Okay, no additional comments. Call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yeah, I'm muted.
You're on mute. Vice Mayor Schroeder?
He's still on mute.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Yes.
Thank you. Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That item has been adopted. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is public comment. All speakers are limited to three minutes. Russell, if you could please start the 30-minute public comment period.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, we have, our first speaker is phone number ending in seven nine six five. Seven nine six five, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Hi, this is George Kailas, six seven two one Hancock Road. In reference to the dump again, next door to me. First thing is, I want to thank the council members who took the time to come by and take a look at this dump again. I listened with great interest to the Supreme Organic and all the restrictions that were put on Supreme. And I found that they were very good restrictions, but you forgot to mention the rats, the snakes, the bull ants, and the snails that they come with the Supreme Organic. This is what I have because of the dump next door to me. Th, this guy is making a fortune just bringing in the mulch, as some of the council members have already seen. If I got it correct, he's making, I don't know, for every five yards, $10 a yard or something like that, there's over a thousand truckloads of, I don't know, between five and 10 yards. So, you can see what he's, what he's making on this. And all he does is just bring in the mulch and lets it lie there. That's his operation, just bringing in mulch and let the mulch, let him, the trucks dump the mulch. He pays, he should be paying $5,700 in taxes, but he's only paying less than $100 a year in taxes, and I get that. It's because of the license that he has, the... But I, I, I don't really know where to go for it. I appreciate you guys coming out and looking at it, but Keith, I understand that you're advising all the council members that nothing can be done. And this is what's stopping anything from being done, anything from being stopped. I might, I don't know, I might suggest that maybe a letter to the magistrate, let him come out and look at it again. Maybe he'll have a different opinion. Maybe we could cite him on the trucks that come out of that area, out of the lot there, and muddy up the whole Hancock Road, as Dee has seen. I, I, I had a lot more to say, but right now, I just can't put it together. So, that, that, I hope some, some of you guys comment on this, so we can see where we stand, and maybe something could be done to stop this. It's gotten to a point where it's really serious. One of the restrictions was a six-foot height. There's some places in there that are already at eight-foot height. And he's got, he paid a half a million dollars for his property, and he's probably making at the, maybe $50,000 a year. Are we gonna allow this to go on for another 10 years or even five years? How long can this go on? The, the height is coming up. The ground is coming up. The, the water table, God knows what's, what's going on down there. We have odor. I think it was Bergeron that suggested to put the odor in a building or something like that.
I'm sorry, but your, but your time's up.
Okay, that's fine. You, you got the point. I hope somebody comments on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kailas. Okay, the next speaker is David Kazinsky. Mr. Kazinsky, can you hear me?
Yes, hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
All right, all right, thanks. Just gonna keep it really, really short, counsel. David Kazinsky, 6411 Holliday Trail. It's been, uh, just recently, it's been really, really, really good times in the Kazinsky household. Sonia's daughter finally completed her medical training. She is officially a medical doctor. Next year, she, she's actually making her applications as we speak for her residency. So, just really good times in the Kazinsky household, and we have, we have congratulations to Leonor Delgado. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kazinsky. Okay, Mayor, the next speaker is Stephen Breckus. Mr. Breckus, can you hear us?
And I'll be quick as well. I just wanted to do a shout out for the, the election season. Just encourage everybody to go out there and vote and have your voice be heard. This is the time, and so it's, it's, you know, it's important. And I know there's a bunch of folks out there because I've seen them, but just encourage everybody to get out there and vote. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Breckus. Next speaker is Jim Albritton. Mr. Albritton, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
You see?
Mr. Mayor, council, staff, thank you so much. Jim Albritton, 5600 166 Avenue. I want to say thank you to all the residents that I've met over the past few months. We have some great people in town of Southwest Ranches. I've learned a lot from them, and I've really enjoyed being out there, meeting with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albritton. Mayor, we have no further speakers.
All right, back to the council.
Mayor, at this point, it's board reports.
All right. Anybody for board reports?
I don't see anyone there.
Seeing none, Mayor, it's now turned over for council member comments.
All right, who'd like to go first?
I will.
Go right ahead, Gary.
I'll volunteer. You know, why break up a good thing? Hey, everybody, thank you for tuning in. Hope everybody is safe and healthy. Just a few announcements I'd like to make, and then I'd like to go over a concept with the council for them to to contemplate in future meetings. First off, we have our holiday lights contest. The information is on the website at the town website. You have to have your entries in by 12:07. The judging will be immediately after that. And, you know, it all goes on by how well you decorate your house. And it's, you know, you get bragging rights for a whole year, so it's, it's a pretty good deal. So, I just want to mention that. Also, too, coming up, town hall is gonna be closed on the 11th, Veterans Day, the day we honor all our vets. You know, unfortunately, we might have a muted ceremony this year because of the COVID crisis, crisis, and but I want all the veterans to know that, you know, we're always thinking about you, you know. God bless you, and you know, you're the wall that everybody stands behind. You protect everybody, and I want everybody to realize that. The last thing I'll have is something I want to briefly go over. It started up last week, our last meeting actually, and it deals with an opportunity we have with a license plate reader camera here at Rolling Oaks. So, I'm looking at it as a pilot program, and I'm reading from notes, so everybody bear with me here. I don't want to miss anything. It's not funded by the town, so we get an opportunity here that we, that it's a non-budgeted item to increase the security here in Rolling Oaks. We're going to have a professional camera system that is on the same platform and specifications as the Davie Police Department require, so there'll be no compatibility issues. The information on vehicles only goes to the police department and plates with be on the lookout bolos, et cetera, and will ping patrol cars instantly by the guy, by going to the police department, and there won't be any abuse by any third parties or anything like that. The system will also allow the police department to monitor traffic when there are break-ins and crimes are being committed. The system will be hardwired to a steady power source, FPL, and use secure cellular network to transfer information to the police with no third-party interference. We should plan, we, I, all of us, and this is part of the concept, we should plan to implement this system across the entire town with all the neighborhoods being covered. We should also make our town the most secure and crime-free in Florida, and man, this is one of the mechanisms that we can do to do this. And we need to consider putting cameras on speed trailers. They have mobile capabilities, and such as on I-95 overpass area or on the east and west side of I-95 before you get on, because that's the route that the criminals take to flee the area after they've broken into homes and cars and all that. We're starting with Rolling Oaks at the only entrance that Rolling Oaks has, Ed Griffin Road. To begin the program, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's gonna be very successful, and it's gonna make the area very secure, but I would like the council to consider this for future use all around the town. I would love to see several cameras in Sunshine Ranches at strategic points, Green Meadows, Deans Ranches, Country Estates, further out west, Christie's Ranches, wherever, wherever the hotspots are that we deem, and maybe traffic studies need to warn where that is, or, you know, something to that effect. But I would like to, looking at the big picture here, right now, the, the Rolling Oaks camera system that's going in, that's the small picture. I'm looking at the bigger picture of putting this in after the pilot program is going in Rolling Oaks and putting it across town. So, it's just one, nobody has to comment on it. I just, I want you guys to, I'm planting a seed. I just want you guys to think about, everybody to think about it. And that's all I got, Mayor. I'll wrap it up.
I think it's a great idea. I like your suggestion, Gary.
Thank you.
Who'd like to go next? Go ahead. Dee's going.
Yeah, um, a couple of things I'd like to say. Hold on one second. I made some notes here. Many years ago, I had the opportunity to meet a gentleman by the name of John Buddy Tool. He was a Davie resident, born and raised, and his plane had crashed last week up in central Florida. He interacted with so many people here in the ranches, and he was, he was great. He had he owned Tools Horse Training is what he owned in Davie, right there on Orange Drive. And he left behind a wife named Susan, a son named River, daughters Jennifer and Sarah. And he was truly a wonderful gentleman and was always... And he was truly a wonderful gentleman and was always there to help anybody. And, uh. I know he wasn't a Southwest Ranch resident, but he spent a lot of time out here and knew a lot of people. And I'd just like to take a moment of silence for him in, in his memory, if that's okay with everybody.
Sure.
All right, thank you for that. Um. Also. Um, I'd like to comment on Mr. Kailas. I did take a ride out there. I did check out the situation. It's as bad as he says it is. Um, I, I didn't see a rat. I seen dozens of rats running all over the place. That to me is a public health thing. Um, and there's got to be something, I think, if we get together and kind of brainstorm. These trucks are impacting our roads and we're the ones that get assessed for it and have to pay to have them fixed. The road is always dirty and filthy. The muck is just lays there. Um, and, uh, I'd like to be able to come in next week, maybe sit down with Andy and Julio. And see where we can go from there. But, you know, I do feel bad for the neighbors. Um, it is ag, it's zone ag, but it is just, uh. Really looks like just a dumping station. He goes and picks up other people's stuff, which. Most of the time, people that do that get paid for it and then he brings it back to our town. With the trucks running up and down the road and he dumps it. And it just keeps building up and building up and building up. And, and I do feel bad. I, I personally wouldn't want to live next door to it. And I think if we get together, perhaps there's something we can do to, to curtail this or, or help, help the surrounding neighbors. Um. I want to let everybody know that, uh, I just married off my first daughter. The wedding was absolutely incredible. She did her one thing that she has talked about since she's been a little girl. She wanted to ride up on her horse. In front of our barn with the goats and the chickens and the horses and she wanted to get married. And by golly, she did it. And she was absolutely, and Bob knows what a beautiful bride looks like, right, Bob? She was absolutely gorgeous. And, uh, it was quite a ceremony to see. Um, so I wanted to share that with everybody. Thank you.
Get a picture in the town newsletter.
Great. Delsa, you're up to bat.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I also went by Mr. Kalas's on Sunday after showing some property and I. I'm really amazed that someone can do what that so-called neighbor is doing. I, I mean, we're worried about noise ordinances and this is really out of hand. Maybe someone hasn't seen it lately. Or seen what it has evolved into. Um, because I don't know, selling things, being paid for dumping, I don't know anything about that. I just know about what I saw. And, um, I, I, I really can't believe it's not an issue or there is something or someone. Uh, we can have go out there. If it's not the town Broward County, if it's, uh. The state, I don't know, because I just don't think it's a good neighbor thing, uh, going on. So maybe I do have a couple photographs. And maybe that would help. Because I just can't believe that what I see there on Sunday. Is the same thing everybody approved or he was approved to do, um, a year ago or however long he's been there. I just think maybe it would behoove us to take a look anyway, just to see. I don't know.
I would say, yeah, Delsa, if I could join in on that for just a minute. Uh, unfortunately, that, that stuff falls under ag, which is allowed by the county and by the state. So the argument or pleading, I would think that we should do, if we want to do it, is towards the county or towards the state related to that. Uh, truthfully.
I agree. I think maybe.
It doesn't fall in the town's lap. It's kind of out of our, kind of out of our hands. And I feel bad for them and feel bad about it, but. Uh, we, because of what it is and how it functions and Keith can step in and tell you. Um, that it's under the county and the state, I said, so. If there's something we can do, trust me, I, I'll be the first guy in line to step up and say, let's do it. Let's take an action.
Well, if I can chime in a second, I didn't.
Wait one second. I'll just finish and then I'll be quiet the whole rest of the night.
No worries, dear. This is the only time we get to talk, so don't feel bad.
All I'm saying is, I don't mean we, the town can do anything. I think it's out of our hands. I know a lot of it's out of our hands, but what I'm saying is, is I don't think that the state. I don't know, maybe there's no one we can contact in the state to oversee it or take a look at it. I'm just saying we might have, we, the town, might have a bigger voice than a single person living next door to it. That's all, that's all I'm saying. I'm, I'm. That's all I'm saying.
I, I had told Mr. Kailas that he needs to start writing some letters. Whether it be to, uh, the agricultural people, whether it be to estate representatives, whatever. But he just needs to pummel them with letters and have somebody come take a look at this because it does look like a problem. And like I said, I'm going to come into town hall next week, sit down with Andy and Julio. And see what we can come up with, you know, to help out wherever we can.
Okay.
Yep.
Who'd like to go next?
Uh, I'll be real quick. I wanted to say thank you to Delsa for, uh, stepping up. I think her term ends, uh, you know, Election Day, so I wanted to say thank you so much. Um, you've, you've worked hard. Uh, I know that you've done the best you can, which is all we can ask. Um, and good luck in your campaign and good luck to all of you actually in your campaigns. I guess we may see some new faces or not in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, well, I've got to say, uh, God willing, I'll be back in office with all things, uh, looking good. Um, and, uh, thank you for my opportunity of serving and look forward to serving some more. So, uh. I guess, uh, aside from that, we can, uh, move on. What's our, uh, next item on the agenda there?
Next item.
Number nine?
Uh, no, we're on legal comments, uh, Mayor.
Oh.
Uh, no, uh, legal comments except for one sort of non-legal that I don't know if Andy's going to touch on, so I'll just mention it. Um, it was brought up before by council member Jablonsky that we're installing the, uh, license plate reader in Rolling Oaks. Andy and Russell have done a phenomenal job in, in, in putting all those pieces together. Uh, but it's going to start with a more of a political move than anything else and that's getting FPNL to actually, uh, run the line within, uh, this lifetime. Um, so, uh, we've already started making the calls to FPNL to get them to, uh, pull the power down from the pole that's there. There's going to be some ex, excavation over there in order for them to, uh, run the power, uh, to where it needs to go. So, uh, as a result of that, I was, uh, working with the mayor and, and, and council member Jablonsky and Kathy Sullivan. And, um, in, in setting up, uh, basically a, uh, a photo op in front of the Rolling Oaks sign tomorrow at two thirty. And the real reason for that photo op i- is really a PSA. It's to tell everyone in town that we can put in the newsletter online, et cetera, that, uh, the, uh, license plate reader is going to be installed there. Uh, we're trying to get ahead of this, uh, because, uh, my fear is that when everyone sees the trenching going on. To get to the sign, some may think that Rolling Oaks is getting city water and, uh, I didn't want that, uh, uh, issue to come up. So I, uh, we felt that the best way is just trying to get in front of it to tell everyone what Rolling Oaks is getting. Uh, so that there's no question in the community. So Andy, sorry for taking your thunder on that one, but I just wanted to make sure it was covered. Uh, nothing else, Mayor.
All right.
Oh, wait, wait. I, I do have one other thing that I emailed the council earlier this week. Um, uh, we had a lawsuit in the town called the Layfield litigation. I'll just state this real quickly. Uh, the Layfield litigation wa- was a case in which a sexual predator was trying to move into Southwest Ranches and. Uh, was attempting to move into a house on Luray Road. He sued us claiming that he had a constitutional right to live wherever he wanted to live and that our ordinance, uh, violated such rights. Um, through the use of our GIS system, we were able to prove that there were locations not near school bus stops. Uh, up by US twenty-seven that, uh, sexual, uh, offenders would be able to, to live in, in the town. And after going back and forth for several months, uh, almost a year, I'm, and winning numerous motions along the way. I'm pleased to inform you that this week we got an email from his council that they are moving on and he's going to move to a different city. And that he's dismissing his case with prejudice. So we were happy to hear that the Layfield case, uh, will be concluded. And that our ordinance relating to the location of, uh, of sexual offenders, uh, is upheld. So sorry, Andy, I just wanted to mention that over here.
If I, if I could just make a comment on that, Luray must be the, the road to be because. Back in, uh, two thousand five, two thousand seven, we had one that lived on the, around the corner of, uh, Luray. And Hallity, it was a bus stop. I contacted Broward County, informed them, talked to Lee Rizzelli, who was with us with BSO at the time. And, uh, he was going to be moved, whether he liked it or not, because he couldn't be there. Well, they found they couldn't move him, so they ended up moving the bus stop, you know, because of all the kids congregating there. But we've, we've had this issue before.
So, Andy, it's over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just have one item that I wanted to touch on.
Go right ahead.
Meeting, at the last meeting, the, the contract was awarded to Supreme Organics and we talked about the facility that we're going to set up over there. And that waste pro would be directed to bring the green waste from in-town collections over to that, to that facility. As a follow-up to that, I had an email from a resident this morning asking me about that and what changes that they could expect to, for them. And what I made clear to that resident, the email, and I did want to touch on it tonight. Was that, that residents won't have to change anything they're currently doing and how they place their bulk out. So we have, we have no plans to inconvenience our residents or change the way they're doing things. The vast majority of the bulk that our residents put out is green waste. And, and so that, that waste will be routed over there. If there's other mixed debris or other things, the vendor will be responsible for sorting that, same as always. But if there's mixed debris, they will not be able to bring it over to that facility. That'll just be for, uh, for the green waste. But our residents are putting out debris now, are able to do exactly what they were doing. We're not making any changes. We don't plan to inconvenience them, uh, in any way. So I just wanted to share that on the record tonight, Mayor, and that's really all I had, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Russell, number nine, I guess.
Yes, Mayor, uh, number nine was actually an item that, uh, we had on, uh, second reading. Uh, but because of the, um, an issue with the fact that it needs to go sent, be sent to the land planning agency, staff is requesting a tabling. So we need a motion to table this until December tenth.
Actually, if I could interrupt, Mayor, that's number nine and, and item ten.
Right.
So we'd like a motion to table both of those items until, uh, December tenth.
Um, because it has to be a, a time certain, if you could just state the date and time.
Yeah.
Make a motion that we move it to, uh, December tenth.
At seven P M.
Okay, somebody give him a second.
I thought. Yes, Councilmember Hartman seconded. We got it.
All right, didn't hear, I'm sorry. Okay, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Sure.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Didn't hear you, you're muted.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Your motion to table passes.
Okay. Number eleven.
Okay, number eleven is. This is an ordinance on first reading. It's an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending Article one-ten concurrency review, section one-ten dash, one-eleven. Public school concurrency of the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code. To update requirements for public school concurrency, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, any public comment on this matter?
I don't see any man.
All right, back to us. No questions, all right, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, number twelve.
We pulled twelve.
Yeah, item twelve, Mayor, has to be back on the LPA, uh, agenda for the next meeting. Uh, Russell, do you intend to re-notice the ordinance as well?
Uh, yes.
If not, we could just table it to a time and day if you prefer.
I think, uh, there's no, uh, ten-day requirement on these for LPA, so I should be able to get the add-in, uh. Tomorrow and get it in time for the next meeting. Actually, the next meeting is not until November nineteenth anyway, so we have time.
Motion to, uh, table till November nineteenth.
I'm sorry, did we get a second?
Yes. Wow.
Thank you.
Yep, call the question.
Uh, sorry. Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to table to November nineteenth passes.
Okay, number thirteen.
I'm sorry, that was number. Yes, I'm sorry, that was number twelve. I apologize. Number thirteen is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the text of the future land use element of the town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan. To repeal the residential medium-density land use category, amending the text of the housing element to revise related policies. Providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency, requesting recertification by the Broward County Planning Council and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Any public comment on this matter?
I don't see any mayor.
All right, any comments, your questions from us? Seeing none, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, fourteen.
Item fourteen is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the text of the public school facilities and capital improvement elements of the town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan. To update the level of service standard for public school facilities, providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency, providing for conflict, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, any questions or concerns on our end? Seeing, you're hearing none, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, fifteen.
Item fifteen is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the greenways plan map and related policies in the recreation and open space element. Of the town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan. Providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency, providing for conflict, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right. Any public comment on this matter?
I don't see any mayor.
All right, any questions or concerns from us? Seeing none, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, sixteen.
Fifteen is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida. Approving an agreement with all water service in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and zero cents. For equipment maintenance and water quality monitoring and treatment of the four transient non-community water systems. For equipment maintenance and water quality monitoring and treatment of the four transient non-community water systems. Authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute the agreement. Approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget and providing an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, any public comment on this matter?
I don't see any mayor.
All right, any questions or concerns on our end? Seeing and hearing none, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes. Okay, Andy, you're stepping in on this.
Yeah, Mayor, I want to jump in. I'm gonna turn it over to Russell for a moment. But this item seventeen is is an award for air purification systems for the air conditioning systems in town hall, in the fire station, and in Bowling Oaks Barn. Uh, we got, Russell went through our procurement uh process, followed the code. We received multiple bids. We learned late this afternoon that one of the vendors, his quote was not clear and we misread it. So what we're, what Russell's gonna explain is that we're actually changing vendors to a lower bid. But I I'd like to turn it over to Russell so he can talk through that process as uh he handled this procurement. Thank you.
Yes, Andy, let me just also um. Someone who may want to weigh in on this real quick, if I may. Okay. So as Andy indicated, we did um. We did seek to get bids and follow our um our procurement code for the provision of these ion generators. As you know, the um. Uh, the town is currently closed due to the coronavirus pandemic and we became aware that these eye wave generators, uh ion generators. Have been proven in a laboratory setting to to kill the coronavirus. Uh, as the air passes over these ion generators, it basically creates these uh ionic charges that uh that kill these viruses. So we thought out to get some estimates from different companies to uh give us a proposal or quote uh to go ahead and do this at all town facilities. We got quotes from three different companies, uh one of them American Pride Mechanical, one of them Debenhair, and one of them Airston. And reviewing the quotes, the uh quotes from Airston and and um and Debenhair were very close with it looking like Debenhair was a little bit uh cheaper. In the amount of sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. I received a phone call literally at six thirty, right before the meeting started, from the owner of American Pride Mechanical. Indicating that uh he believed that he should have uh been awarded the 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 work. And speaking with him on his quotation, it wasn't clear to me, uh but he made it very clear to me um in looking at the quotation, if you look at the backup. That his price of nine twenty-seven uh is not a total price per unit. It's basically, if I can pull it up here. It's a choice of two different types of units. So if you look at his quote. Instead of it being nine twenty-seven per unit. It's actually either four forty-seven or three ninety plus the eighty dollar, uh plus the ninety dollars for labor. So we would want the self-cleaning generator, which is four forty-seven. Plus the ninety is actually five thirty-seven. If you multiply that by the twenty units that we need, your your total price is actually ten thousand dollars.
Wow.
So this, as you can see, is a major reduction in the uh amount that we thought we were going to have to spend. We initially thought that the quote included somehow uh both types of systems. Uh, we didn't know if it was some kind of uh, you know, component that required both systems. So the estimate was misread, and so I wanted to apologize for that, but the total quotation from American uh Pride is actually ten thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. For the twenty units, and I would actually like to recommend that we change this resolution if council will so indulge. Uh, to award the work to American Pride Mechanical uh in the amount of ten thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. I have the owner of American Pride Mechanical on the phone if you wish to speak to him as well. He's a resident of the town as well. Mr. David Sears.
I have a question.
Here.
Yeah, um, it was all these specifications met uh correctly and.
Yes, they're they're they were all. Yeah, they were, each of the firms was quoting the eye wave system, which is what we specified, because that's what we looked at in the uh the literature that we had received as being proven to have. Uh, to kill the coronavirus in laboratory testing. Initially, um Airston, one of the companies actually proposed a different product uh that was not proven. We asked them to then revise their quote. And send us a revised quote based on the eye wave. What you see here is their revised quote. So all of the firms. Are the backup material that you see are on the eye wave generators are all the same.
Okay, good, uh satisfied that question. Um, I'll make a motion to approve with the vendor change.
Second.
Okay, good. Any public comment on this matter?
Here's his hand raised. Would you like to um hear what he has to say, Mayor?
Sure.
I think he just, I think he just dropped his hand.
Oh, did he?
Yeah. Nope, he's back on.
Mr. Sears, can you hear me?
Now again, if he talks.
Mr. Sears, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, turn your volume up a little.
I just, I just, sorry that the uh quote was a little misconstruing, but it's just that the self-cleaning one. And the non-cleaning one are two different options depending on if it'll fit. In the application by the tonnage of all the AC units. Unfortunately, due to coronavirus, I haven't been able to walk all the uh areas. Of um of Southwest Ranches. So I had a general idea by talking with Russell and uh. That's, that's why I gave the two different options. I mean, uh obviously, we all want to go with the cleaning one. But, you know, due to the fact that you guys are gonna have quarterly maintenance, is I think coming up. Um, they'll also be able to do it if we don't have uh, if we don't have the option of putting the self-cleaning apparatus in there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave, for clearing that up. Anybody else have any questions?
We have one other speaker, Mayor. I believe it might be Noel Hollingsworth. Mr. Hollingsworth, are you there? Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, my question is very simply this. Has the council got all of the same documentation as they would have had for Debenhair Mechanical? At this point? And have they read it? And are they agreeing with Russell and the vendor? That what they're saying is correct? And they don't have any questions as to what it is and have all of the paperwork been filled out? So it can be signed immediately? That is, those are my questions. Thank you very much. I'm signing off.
Thank you, Noel. Well, if I can answer that question, uh, Mayor?
Me too.
Basically, American Pride is currently a vendor of ours, so they've already submitted all of our our paperwork. We are um, we are processing that paperwork in our finance department. Once that's all processed by our finance department, they would be an approved vendor just like anybody else. Um, and as far as the the quotation that uh they submitted. I mean, it, we have it in the backup there. Uh, say that, I mean, once we got the clarification. I I have a level of comfort, but uh I I obviously will defer to council on this issue.
Okay.
Um, I just want to make a comment if I could, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Um, uh, what hasn't been mentioned too is that we're going to be submitting this bill. Uh, Andy, I believe for the uh reimbursement from the CARES Act, is that correct? So we may, we may get a.
We vote the town will be reimbursed for this, yes.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
But we still want to, we obviously get the best deal we can.
Yeah, absolutely. That goes without saying, yeah, I mean, totally. That's, that was, that's the only remarks I have.
Okay, call the question, I guess.
Okay, um, Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Well, we're on to minutes.
Okay.
Eighteen fire assessment.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, Russell, you're up to bat.
Yep.
You give me one second, I'll bring up the presentation.
Yeah, just as, as you all recall, uh, you had requested that I bring back, do look into the fire assessment and and bring that back. And uh, update you with some little research, bring back some thoughts and ideas to share with you. So uh, obviously, we went ahead and did that and uh, Russell, advance slide. Yeah, thank you. Okay, a- as you all know, last year during two thousand nineteen, when we went through the budget process, it became very clear that we had an issue with commercial. Uh, barn, the fire assessments. And that that led in the fall to the council forming the Fire Assessment Review Committee, otherwise known as the FARC. And the council passed them at the time with providing recommendations for council consideration. Slide. Okay, and the focus at that time wa- was was on the barn issue, because that's, that's really was at the forefront of our discussions last year. We weren't able to look closely across all agricultural uses, and I will say that the FARC was limited in their ability. Uh, they got off to a good start, but we got hit with a pandemic that was very early. We were really pre-zoom at that point. And I'll say that the pandemic may have substantially impacted their ability to to meet further and discuss it and and come up with some further options. So earlier this year in twenty twenty, the fire study was updated and adopted. We established a single fee per residence with barns, whether they were considered commercial or agricultural or not. And and that recommendation, which which the council adopted, was a recommendation that came out of those the FARC meetings. This year, we find ourselves in a very similar, but a different predicament with nursery properties. So as we went through the process this year, residents voiced their concerns. Council provided direction for us to go back and review this and provide an update. So that's where we are now. The one thing we wanted to make sure that was the review that we did had addressed both legal compliance. A- as well as the fairness issues. So we requested a a review of the legality from our consultant's legal counsel. And we provided, as far as I know, we probably actually provided all the information that the town residents and and other interested parties submitted to us. I know that the consultant mentioned some of that in their response, if you'll click the slide, Russell. Uh, we received the response uh yesterday from their legal compa- uh counsel. And that indicated that the methodology and the process that we went through was legally compliant or is legally compliant under Florida state statutes. Slide. So although the time to legally appeal the assessment has passed. We need to make sure that we protect the integrity of our overall study, or we can risk having it invalidated. We can't afford to place at risk the. Two million, two million, six hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars that the town collects for public safety toward towards fire. So we we had to make sure that we respected that. Go ahead. So I just wanted to share this slide here for 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 just a couple of reasons. Uh. The town is comprised of almost thirty-four hundred properties, thirty-three eighty. Of which approximately one in seven, four hundred eighty-four have an agricultural designation. So what we're trying to do is raise a set dollar amount, the previous two point six million that you saw from a limited number of properties. The concern is if we make a change in one area, then it does have impacts on on other properties. Uh, the other thing I I wanted to add here is that. Providing a benefit or supporting the agricultural properties is a policy decision. It's a decision of the council. It is not an administrative decision. There are, I know some residents in town who believe that town staff may be anti-agriculture, and I just wanted to say here for the record that that's not true. When we go out and do our jobs, our job is to be professionally objective and treat thirty-three hundred and eighty parcels the same. And and so our our goal is to is to look at them all equally and and work fairly. Any policy decisions that are made by that beyond that are are certainly a a result of uh council decision and direction. So during the budget hearings this year, during the council meetings, it was very clear. Uh, we heard from the residents, we heard from the council, we heard from the affected property owners. That something needed to be done. It it was clear, there was a a clear consensus as well that everybody should pay something. I don't believe that any of those property owners were looking for a free ride. I think their their goal was to be treated fairly. So when we came back to it from our review. Our our approach was, how can we be both fair and equitable? Right? So the presently known affected properties that we're aware of have a fiscal year twenty twenty-one total fire assessment of just under fifteen thousand dollars. This does not include, to be determined, is is the Griffin Road Nursery Property, which is the property immediately to the east of Town Hall. This is the property that that Lori Parish has mentioned repeatedly, and and I'll say here that Lori's a hundred percent correct. That property, if if that home that's on there is not being used as a single-family home, it needs to be treated the same as these other properties. So we we will factor that into our our decision going forward. Our our current restricted fire control reserve funds are three hundred and ten thousand. That's of uh October first of last year. That's our our most recent audited number. That's why I wanted to provide that now. As I said before, any potential solution that we talk about must be fair and it must be equitable. So we wanted to to share with council an idea that we had as far as a potential solution. And that's to take those affected properties and create a partial. Uh, fire assessment mitigation rebate for those properties, subject to town inspection, so that we can make sure that that it's truly being used for agricultural purposes. And I I do have a list of those properties. I'm sure most of those property owners are are following very closely and are online tonight. Uh, uh, very quickly, we've identified Flack, Barry, Parga, Fernandez. And uh, the Griffin Road Nursery Property uh immediately to uh. To the east of Town Hall. So the public purpose here. Because everything we do needs to have public purpose. Russell? Is this will allow the council to express their support for the agricultural businesses and lifestyles. If that's consistent with what the town is founded on and what the what the council wishes to to preserve and encourage going forward, this would be an opportunity to do that. And I will say that there is a precedent for an approach like this. This is actually very similar uh to what we currently do. On solid waste and fire assessment fees for uh those uh veterans who are one hundred percent disabled, have a service-related disability. So we do that now on solid waste. We do it on the fire assessment for those folks. If the council wishes to extend something similar to these agricultural properties, obviously, we we have the opportunity to do that. So. If council is receptive, and obviously, we ask you to solicit some public in- uh input tonight and discuss it amongst yourselves. But if if the council is receptive to this. Uh, we'll go back and explore a rebate criteria and and look at some things like. The maximum percentage that you might want to make available to those property owners. The number of eligible properties. We want to make sure that they are verified agricultural by BCPA. Uh, as I said before, subject to town inspection and and certainly any other concerns that that the town might have. Slide. And this is a proposed solution for where we find ourselves right now. I can tell you that this this is not a long-term solution. So obviously, we need, we need to get our our our. Direction from council and and certainly work on this more aggressively so that we can solve it, so that we don't go through something like this again. Uh, during the budget process in twenty twenty-one. So any further changes that we're gonna make, we would need to have in place by by March first of next year, so that we can meet BCPA deadlines for for next year. So uh. The next step really is just to get some input from you to see if council likes this idea, if public is receptive to that. Get some input and some direction on how we go forward. And uh, if there's clear direction to do that, obviously, we will flesh that out and bring that back to you at the very next council meeting. So thank you, Mayor. Obviously, we're available for any questions you have for your discussion and 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 any public input. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Actually, a couple of questions. Um, Andy, what what do you suggest um? Between now and March, so this, so we don't repeat this. Uh, I think everybody is pretty, pretty, uh, I think the council is pretty unanimous in that we want to fix this. Um, I'm I'm obviously talking about myself only, but I'm pretty sure. Um, I'm, I'm obviously talking about myself only, but I'm pretty sure that's the sentiment across the board. Uh, it's just a question of how we do it, but how do we make sure it doesn't happen again?
Yeah, I, I would suggest that we, we need to sit down with, with our consultant and work through that methodology and, and make those adjustments well in advance.
Okay.
My guess, if I could join in with you, Gary, my guess would be we're all on board with what we're trying to do here, but as far as fixing, moving forward, this is, I mean, because this is too frequently to happen.
Well, I think we, we, I obviously want input from all of you, but we need to sit down with our consultant and revisit that methodology. I don't, I don't think it warrants a new study. But an update and maybe a revision going forward that, that we need to jump on pretty aggressively so that, uh, none of us want to go through this experience again next year. And I, and I know our residents though.
Okay. I, I know that our consultant has agreed to help us.
And no additional charge.
Yeah, and, and no, at no cost to us, um, I'm assuming, uh, based on what he, what he said last time. So I think we should move in that direction as soon as possible. If you're looking for some direction from me personally, that's, that's what I would recommend, that we do that for next year. So that we don't have a repeat of this. Working backwards just a little bit, um, based on, I think this rebate is a, uh, a, a good idea. I think, I think it, uh, it's workable, it's a workable solution. I see it as a, a one-time only if we can fix it. By next week, that's why I was, that's why my first question was, how do we prevent this so that we don't have to keep coming up with a rebate or, you know, something to that effect? But we want to make this, you know, something fair and the affected properties need, um, need relief because, uh, some of them got really slammed. And, and they, they want to pay, they want to pay their fair share. They've all said that. That's not a, that's not an issue. But when it, you know, double, triples and quadruples what they paid, uh, and, you know, did it in twenty-four hours. I mean, I can understand the sticker shock, you know, wholeheartedly. So I think, you know, we need to treat this as a one-time only and figure out the criteria that we would like to see on it. What you're suggesting here, um, looks good. I don't, I don't have anything to add to that at this point. Moving forward, other than we want to make sure it doesn't happen again. So, so those are my thoughts.
All right, may I say something? I, I was just going to say that, no, I agree with the one-time rebate and working to fix it. And I would also suggest as a resident of the town, because I am a resident of the town, that we not do fire assessments every nine and ten years. Perhaps if we were closer in time, like maybe every five years, I note that it is an expensive, um, undertaking. But I think that might have been part of the problem this time is that almost ten years went by. Costs never go down. They always go up. No matter what we try and do to mitigate that, it's just the way the wheel turns. And so that would be a suggestion, uh, prospectively that, that I would like to take a good look at.
Okay. Anyone else?
I agree with Gary. I think this should be a one-time thing. I think it's good and we shouldn't get ourselves in this mess again.
Andy, quick question. How will we determine fair? When you're trying to work out, uh, the difference between, uh, what, what a resident thinks they should be charged and, and what they're being charged?
Ultimately, that's going to be up to the council, but I'm going to, I will flesh this out between now and the November meeting and probably give you a sliding scale of some percentages to, to give you some idea as far as the dollar impact. Ultimately, the council is going to determine what, you know, whether you think thirty percent, fifty percent, what arbitrarily, whatever, whatever you think is appropriate. And, and I, I will supply to you all, uh, the, the numbers on the individual properties. So you have that. So that you'll be able to look at the history on those properties and, and what the current fees are. Because I, I, I want you to have that for part of your analysis. So we'll get that information to you. But ultimately it's going to be what the council determines is fair. And, and, and as we sit here now, I, I don't know what that'll be.
Thank you, Andy. You had one more question to go along with it. Actually, I'll wait. Hold on. I'll wait.
Mayor, there are two members of the public who'd like to speak at this point. I'm sure there'll be more.
Okay.
Follow them, Mayor.
Go ahead.
All right, the first speaker appears to be Sharon Glass. Ms. Glass, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Um, I don't want to comment on this. I had my hand up for the ionizing machine, so that's too late. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker, Mayor, is Linda Flack.
Okay.
Ms. Flack, can you hear us?
Yes. I do. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you. I wanted to find out a few things. Um, you say that you don't want this to be repeated. It was already repeated. This happened to us in two thousand and nineteen as well. We were charged, uh, six thousand dollars on one of our barns. And then again, this year it was applied to all of our barns. So that needs to be addressed. So you were saying also that it's a one-time only. I tried to get this taken care of last year and I was told it will be reviewed and taken care of. I still had to pay that six thousand dollars because nobody finalized anything. And this year it is actually worse because it went to more than one of our barns. So I don't know about a one-time only credit. And Delsa, you said that we were assessed just this year. It was last year as well. And it, and, and I'm not the only one. So Bob, you mentioned that, um, it should be fair. I think it should be fair across the board, just like it is for all the homes. All the homes are assessed a specific amount. I think it should be assessed across the board for the barns too. And, um, I'm just feeling that you say we can't have meetings in the town hall because of COVID. Well, we're not going to have anybody come take a look at our home during COVID either. You can look at all this on satellite. So I would just really like to find out what you're planning on doing, Andy, to decide how we're going to be credited and how we're going to be assessed in the future going forward to be fair. That's it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Fred Cox. Mr. Cox, can you hear us?
Yes, sir. Well, I'm extremely disappointed. We had three property owners with four properties. We had twenty days to respond, to respond to the trim notice. They did so in writing to our, our town, uh, financial officer who sat on it until the twenty days expired. And now we appear that they're late. They weren't late. They noticed the town that the fire fees on their properties were inaccurate and incorrect. Uh, now here it is in October and we're making up new rules. One of the properties has a house on it and a barn on it, which the committee agreed and the council approved in July would be one fee for parcel. That's Jim Berry. Linda Flack and Todd Flack, Linda just spoke, have two parcels. We, we've just gone over this. I've written you, uh, uh, I've got the state involved, the, uh, agricultural department's involved. And we keep pushing this down the road. We keep kicking the can, can down the road. This is three property or three people, four properties. It's a five-minute decision. Y'all made a hundred million dollar decision last week, giving somebody a ninety-nine-year contract in less time than we spent on two or three or four thousand dollars in fire fees, which have been unfair and unjustly assessed. The letter from Chris Wallace's attorney does not address the role issue. She assures us that the law is valid. No one has questioned the law. I stated last year, we're talking about horse barns, that the law gives the town the authority to assess us. We didn't question that. It's why you're assessing us, why you're assessing us, the amount that you are, et cetera. The law does not allow the town or Andy to selectively enforce an arbitrary decision.
Tons of.
Thank you. Ten seconds. Andy just used that word arbitrary. It's not arbitrary. It should be black and white. Thank you. I hope we can do the right thing. It's a five-minute decision. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Uh, Mayor, the next speaker is Barb Pargo. Ms. Parker, can you hear us?
Uh-huh, yes. Uh, thank you. I'm, I want to tag on to what Linda Flack was saying about, um, being a one-time thing because we too were assessed last year for a much higher rate. And when I called the town hall repeatedly, no one ever called me back and, uh, was just eventually gave up and we paid our property tax with the three thousand two hundred dollar, I believe it was, assessment on our warehouse last year. So now this year it's thirty-seven fifty for this barn where we store, you know, tools and equipment and everything. There's no, there's, there are no facilities in there, no restroom, no nothing, just a place to store. We have shelves for storage for materials and, uh, tools that we use in our nursery. So Mr. Wallace, so that's, that's really two years, not one year. Mr. Wallace called me, um, oh, a few weeks ago after the first meeting that I spoke on because I think he was, and he said he was going to explain it to me how it worked. So apparently thought I was not smart enough to understand. So I let him explain it to me until I finally asked him how he was able to determine the value of, you know, and why we were being assessed for this amount when people around us who actually have industrial operations going on on our street, who are seemingly apparently not being taxed that way or assessed because we haven't heard from them. But he did tell me that he would call me back, that perhaps, probably we needed to be re, it needed to be in a diff, in a different category, but he never called me back. So I agree with Linda Flack. One year is not enough.
Okay. Tons of, I'm sorry.
Yeah. We still have to pay it and I don't like that one bit.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Okay, the next speaker, Mayor, is David Kozinski.
Hi, uh, just want to re, uh, reiterate the, uh, comments, um, that, um, Ms. Flack had mentioned earlier, uh, that, um, this, it, when it came up with a vote, it should have been discussed at that point and addressed at that point. Uh, waiting, uh, until after it's all, after the votes have been taken, budgets opposed, it's like, I guess, a different way of putting a Band-Aid on it. Um, I hope it gets addressed in a more methodical and more solid nature, so the fire fees are spread equally among every property as the fire assessment committee, uh, made the determination when I was there and saw that. That's the way it should have been done and, um, it just doesn't make sense why these properties were separated out later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kozinski. Next speaker, Mayor, is Fred Siegel. Mr. Siegel, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, and thank you. There's a couple of points I just want to make, and one is if you're going to have a fire fee on agricultural structures, it really would need to be on all agricultural structures, not just selected ones. Then what you also need to look at the exposure that you have with an agricultural structure. You don't have people coming in and out of it like you do with a commercial business like a Lowe's or a Publix. So you have much lower exposure that way than commercial, in a normal commercial. So I don't really think you should be looking at this at a commercial rate. If you, I, no one has said that people shouldn't pay something. And I think one of the things you may want to take a look at would be something to the effect of that the assessment on a agricultural structure should not exceed the amount of the assessment of a residential dwelling unit.
Okay. Who's next? Anyone else? Hello? Yep.
Russell, you're on.
John Eastman is next. Mr. Eastman, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Uh, these aggrieved properties need to have a remedy and the council needs to reimburse them. And as we go forward, the town should be more concentrated on reducing the fire budget. As we have two fire departments, one of them's completely redundant, costing us half a million dollars a year in additional costs. And the Davy Fire Contract with its four and a half percent increase per year was kind of negotiated under, uh, conditions we didn't really have a choice, you know? So hopefully in the future, we can get a much more economical, uh, plan for taking care of our needs. And the one thing to remember is we average one fire a year in Southwest Ranches. So the business for the department is rescue, rescue, rescue. And, you know, if you're putting these big taxes on, uh, structures that are very low risk and, uh, you know, not going to likely cause a, a fire or an issue, which we have one fire a year. Let's be looking at taxing the people who are actually using those rescue service fees like Lowe's. You know, how many times does Rescue respond there with heart attacks and sick people and such? So let's, let's be a little smarter about that. But these properties that were overcharged this year need to be, uh, need to be refunded that money and it could come out of general funds or out of the fire reserve fee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eastman. Okay, Mayor, the next speaker is Steve Breckers. Is the Brecker?
Yeah, thanks. Um, I, I just wanted to speak on the issue of fairness and what is fair. My, my concern is that we've been looking at this since the middle of summer and here we are almost in November and we still have not given these residents any idea of what are the, the town's determination of what fair is going to be. And I think that could have easily been, a proposal could have been presented this evening. We had time to put together this PowerPoint. Um, all we needed was one more slide to give the residents an idea of what is fair and what's not going to be fair. So they would have some time to review it, think about it, determine, uh, an avenue for feedback and be able to continue the, the, the dialogue to make sure that it is fair. Unfortunately, I suspect this is going to go like the last meeting where we make a major decision and, um, we'll have two minutes to respond to it, like it or not, and that's going to be it. That happens way too often. This is about the residents. I didn't hear anything there that says that we're going to have an interaction with the residents that are most affected by this to determine what is fair. Sounds to me like we're going to have another proposal made. They're going to have a quick two minutes to respond and then, you know, like it or not, that's what it is. It's not right. We've got plenty of time. We've been working on this since midsummer. We should, they, there, there should be a proposal out there that the residents have heard and can provide feedback on over a reasonable amount of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Breckers. Uh, the next speaker, Mayor, is Noel Hollingsworth.
Okay.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, Noel Hollingsworth, Hundred Ninety-Ninth Avenue. This is the exact thing that I have harped upon to the council for years. We wait till the eleventh hour and then we make a decision we can't get back out of because it has to go to the property appraiser's office for the tax assessment. If we start right now, and Andy has said he is going to put something together, whatever the council determines, and bring it back at the next meeting, that is a good start. We need to do a new fire assessment study that comes back in January or February at the latest. And that is when it should be and set by the rules by the council in December or November. And have the fire assessment study and then we can beat it up all we want in February, March and April, and we still have time to take care and we still have time to take care of everything, instead of waiting to the last meeting before it has to go to the tax assessor, and it's the 11th hour, and we got to pass it tonight, and it's not going to have any fire assessment whatsoever. And we've done that. We had to put our own fire assessment out to all the residents. Let's do it right. Let's get started now, where we have the time and the people who are going to be affected by it can say their two cents and understand it, and we can come to a mutually agreed situation where the fire assessment is going to be fair for everybody. That's all I got to say. Please take that into consideration. Thank you. I'm off.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth.
Anyone else?
There's no new speakers with their hands up, mayor.
Okay, back to the council.
I'd like to clarify something, if I could, mayor.
Go right ahead, Gary.
Thank you, and thank everybody for commenting. When I said one-time rebate, that comment was predicated by fixing the problem by next year. That would make this a one-time rebate. This is, the problem has to be fixed long-term solution. We need to give relief to the to the affected parties as soon as possible, which Andy's going to put together the criteria for that. And we're going to, I would like to see the history of the fire fees paid on those properties, which I'm sure Andy and Marty will be able to have at the same time. But I do want to reiterate that the one-time aspect of this rebate is predicated totally on having the problem solved by March or whenever the next deadline is. So I just want to point that out.
Andy, I did have the question I wanted to ask earlier.
Go ahead.
In your presentation, you had about, I don't know, 14,000 or so exposure in there, and then you had a comment underneath it about that other nursery. Is that what we feel our exposure is, or is that just the exposure based on contacts made to the town so far by residents?
That's that's based on a known number of properties. Flack, Pargo, Barry, Fernandez. I think that's the four that we're aware of, and so we went and totaled those up. The property next to town hall needs to be assessed properly, but we need to determine what that will be so that we can correct that, because that should not be billed with a single-family home rate if, obviously, it's not a single-family home.
Okay, let me jump in. I want to jump in and join Bob on part of this. Is that just this past year, or is Flack and some of the others said it goes back two years? So I'd like to address the two-year part also, if we could.
The numbers that I gave, that just under 15,000 are for the upcoming year, not not past. But part of what we will, we will get to you is on those impacted properties, what their fire assessment was last year, the year before, or let's say we'll give you a three-year history. The property owners have indicated that it was a problem last year, so they're saying it's two years. So what we will give you is a three-year history on those parcels, so that you can see that.
Are we good with that, gentlemen, ladies?
I'm just worried about what we don't know. That's all.
Okay, well, I mean, the history will, the history's there, so we should be able to have it, right?
Are you talking about the history just of the properties that you've been mentioning, Andy, or the history for all properties impacted?
Those are the ones that we have identified. We recognize there may be some others, so we may put an upper limit cap on the total amount that the town would like to contribute to this cause. But, you know, I recognize those property owners have an issue. We all have an issue, but I know they have an issue. And, you know, we've spoken about it privately as well, and the goal or the intent here is to be fair.
Right. Well, let me throw in the other thing related to that is the goal and the issue, from what I recall, was not to assess the barns. But then the problem occurred that if they have ag through the county and they file in a different way, then ag barns are actually treated differently than barns that don't have ag. Is that not correct?
Correct, yes.
All right, so the thought process moving forward is, to me, if you've got ag, then you you're almost penalizing people who have ag, but which they really shouldn't be. But here or there, if you don't get ag, you don't have anything on your barn. But if you qualify and get ag from the county, you fall in a different category. So maybe, I don't know what that category is or should be, but if penalized, that's that's most of the people that are having the problem have ag. Do they not?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't believe that any of the people that are complaining don't have ag.
I believe that's correct. I think it applies to the commercial agricultural designation properties, yes.
All right, so.
Issue, our category covers both. It covers what we call commercial ag, and it also covers Lowe's. One of the things that was brought up by the group during the discussions was having potentially another category that we could, you know, rate the fire calls, et cetera, and break them down, and that be what we would call our commercial ag, and those would be the properties, the types of properties we've been discussing.
I agree with the council on that, but I think that's 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 really more the long-term fix to get right.
Okay, well, we got to get it right sooner than later, though.
Correct, correct.
Listen, I clearly, you know, I was talking to Marty about this three or four years ago when we started implementing all this commercial stuff. But here or there, it had to get to a blazing fire before it got addressed. But anyhow, here or there, where we are today, let's get it fixed.
No, and I do appreciate the input from the public tonight, and obviously, I would encourage them to reach out to me and share their thoughts as we work on this to bring it forward. This this needs to be a collaborative process, and that's certainly the intent.
Okay, anyone else have any additional comments on this? All right, so I think the thought process moving forward, Andy, and correct me if I'm wrong here, my colleagues. I think more we're looking, we're looking for a help and reimbursement, but I think in some cases, the reimbursement is more than just this year.
Ultimately, that's going to be up to the council. We'll give you the three-year rolling history, and the council will be able to come to that determination.
Have any of these properties changed from, you know, like being considered one parcel and then been split, and now they have same property owner, but, you know, they're planted different, they're different parcels?
We have property owners here who have multiple properties, but I don't believe there's been any changes year to year in the number of parcels they have. Some have three, some have two, but I think that's been consistent year to year.
And none of them are vacant? There's always, there's something on each parcel?
If it was vacant, it wouldn't be a factor here.
Well, they have ag. All these people that have the issue are ag properties, from what I know.
Okay. Okay, so I have a question. So, so, so multiple folio numbers. One of those, they're all ag, but one has a residence on it. So it's going to pay the residential type of fee. The others have outside of pole barns, some kind of a building, and they might be worth more than $10,000 or whatever. And Broward County looks at it one way, and no matter what Linda Flack says, I wasn't here two years ago. So this is the first fire assessment I've been involved in at all with a fire assessment board of 12 or 14 or 22 people on it that gave us the information. So we want to be fair. Fair, F-A-I-R is in the E-Y-E-I of the beholder. And what is fair for one person may not be fair for the next person. It's subjective. And we want to do, at least I do, and I'm sure the rest of us do, want to do the best we can for the property owners involved. And we only know of, if I'm wrong, Andy, four people, four entities?
Well, I think five total that we're aware of, but there may, there may well be more.
But if there are more, they haven't called the town to complain and or put their name in, right?
Yeah.
No, they have, they have not, correct.
All right, so we know of five, and that, those are the five people who have been most vocal, and we want to help them. So I agree with Gary that, and and the mayor, that we need to mitigate whatever we can now and try and fix whatever we can in the future. Someone called in and said that it's rescue, rescue, rescue. Well, I don't know if that person's aware, but most fire departments, that's what they do, is rescue, rescue, rescue. They may have a fire every now and then, and that means Oakland Park, Fort Lauderdale, Miami, it's rescue, rescue, rescue. So I don't think we're any different in that way, and I think once you catch on fire, you remember that pretty much the rest of your life. So it's just the one time, maybe, but it's an important one time in your life. So we want to be fair. We want to be as equitable as possible, and that means to everybody in this town, every taxpayer in this town. So when we look at fair, maybe the owners of these five properties or six, seven properties could let us know what they think is fair. Then Andy might have a a stepping stone, if you will, from which to go from. But we're going to do the best we can, and that's all I've got to say.
Okay.
I have a question, mayor.
Go ahead, Gary.
Andy may be able to answer this, not right now. You might have to research this. But most, most of the, some of the people have, who have been affected by this, had mentioned that this is their second year. This was actually the first year of the new study. So my question is, how did, what triggered it the previous year? Because there was no new study two years ago. So I'm kind of scratching my head on that.
It was the, it was the implementation of what the study that we had from previous, that they were starting to implement over the years, and it just I knew it wasn't going to work when they started implementing it.
But who triggered that? Broward County or us?
No, well, Broward County was initiated, but but based on what our study was, Marty Sherwood had, I guess, in between Marty and Andy, had reviewed it and maybe Keith, and said, look, you know, it is what it is, and you got to implement it based on what the county's telling you. So that's what they started doing, and then all hell broke loose.
So was that through the Broward County Property Appraiser?
Yes.
Oh, that's Martin Carr's department.
Well, you know, I'm curious, I'm curious if, you know, any laws changed or anything like that.
Yeah, I would be curious, too.
You know, something, something changed, and, you know, it may, we may have been aware of it. Maybe we haven't been, but anyway, we can get into that as we, we're not making any decisions tonight other than giving Andy direction, if I'm correct, in what I'm, what I'm hearing here, so.
I'm sure Andy has a clear direction, right?
And I'll replay the meeting and listen to the public comment again, so.
Okay, all right. So are you looking for anything else, or you kind of got your marching orders, I can guess?
I think I've got an idea what you're looking for and the additional information you want to supplement that as well. And we'll pull that together for you as quickly as we can.
All right, and if it takes more money to fix the problem, we're going to have to pay attention?
Thank you.
All right, so let's see, approval of minutes, please.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right. Anybody got their hand raised to correct our minutes at all, Russell?
We have two speakers, but I suspect it might have been on the previous discussion, mayor, so do you want to call on them? Yeah, those hands were up before.
Yeah, well, then skip them if their hands are up before, because we're not going back to that right now. So, all right. Any of us have any input on approval of minutes at all, or any changes? Seeing none, call the question.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right.
Gary.
It's that time.
It's that time. You're up.
Motion to adjourn. Good night, folks.